All the selectmen of the president will stop by transmitting the Treasury warrants, forty-seven, forty-seven A, forty-eight, forty-eight A, forty-nine, and forty-nine A. And a motion?
Move to approve the warrants as read by the chairman.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor? Janus? We have approval of selectmen minutes from May ninth, two thousand eleven, and May twenty-third, two thousand eleven. If there's any questions, we'll take them both up together. Our motion so moves.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Janus? We'll start with our seven o'clock appointment. Frank West, captain of Wilmington Minutemen, an invitation to attend the flag retirement ceremony, request to use the town common in July and August two thousand eleven to conduct drilling and marching exercises. Mr. West, how you doing?
Good, yourself, Mr. Chairman?
Good, thanks.
Basically, first of all, I'd like to thank the chairman, town manager, and our selectmen for inviting me here, and I'll be as brief as possible. As you know, that for the past probably about eight or nine years now on Flag Day, which is June fourteenth, what we've done is that we've -- actually, let me back up. We've collected during the year, including right out of town hall here, there's a bucket that we put -- residents can put old obsolete worn flags, so that on June fourteenth, what we can do is we can retire them in a manner befitting the dignity of a flag, which is retiring by burning. What they won't say is burning flags, but retired by burning. And what we're going to do is that tomorrow being Flag Day, we're going to have a ceremony at Minutemen Headquarters, seven o'clock, and we'd like to invite any certainly any of the selectmen, manager, members of the audience to attend the event. We've got probably about two hundred odd flags that are old, unserviceable, that we folded into triangles, and what we're going to do is we'll have a little ceremony, and then one by one, we'll have residents and anyone that wants, they can throw a flag into our burning pits that we'll be using. We've got some Boy Scouts that'll be coming down, hopefully some Girl Scouts, and what we'll be doing also is that we've got some flags that I've left not folded, that what we can do is we can teach the kids a little bit about flag etiquette and how to properly fold a flag. So that's basically about it. I don't know, on that end, I don't know if you had any questions or comments?
Questions, comments from the board?
No questions. I thank you for conducting this operation. I think it's worthwhile, and hopefully a lot of children will come and participate and learn about this process and just witness it. And it's seven PM tomorrow.
Seven PM, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. West. And basically, why this was started was is that one of our founding members of Wilmington Minutemen, Frank Curly, who's since unfortunately passed away, what he noticed was is that after nine eleven, everyone got really patriotic and held flags all over the place, and as weeks and months and years went by, a lot of those flags, even though it was great to see flags out there, were beyond repair, shall we say, and you wanted to give an avenue that we could dispose of them. And certainly, you know, being the Veterans Agent, if you know any Veterans groups, you know, I talked to them at the Memorial Day Parade, so you know, I wanted to see if we can get any of the vets down or whatever, anybody, you know, certainly open to the public.
Very good.
And, I'm sorry, the other agenda item that we had is that, as you were aware, last year we came before the Board of Selectmen to use the town common, to do a little bit of mustering, you know, on the common. Basically, what we asked for last year was five different Tuesdays. We were able to use actually three of the Tuesdays because one of them, the Recreation Department, I think, had a makeup day for a concert, and one day it was rained out. And certainly, you know, we're not looking to, you know, use the common on a rainy day. The purpose of this is a continuation of, you know, what we do is is that, and actually, let me, before I forget, I wanted to just mention a couple of people in the audience, by the way. Obviously, I'm the captain of the company this year, but I've also got Karen West is the lieutenant, and Mike Bodnar is the current adjutant sergeant. So I did want to introduce it there in the audience here. But basically, what we do is that we go to different towns, and we do a lot of parading in different communities, and whenever we parade, what do we carry? We carry the Wilmington Guide on, which is a symbol of the town of Wilmington. Using the common last year helped us a lot in our parades, and I just wanted to actually hand out, if I may, this was the supplement that we had. That gives you an idea of some of the different -- what that is, that was a Memorial Day supplement to the recent town prior, and that gives you an idea of some of the recent events that we've been in. Most recent event that we had was in Boston just a couple of weeks ago, where we're invited guests to the Ancient and Honorable Artillery Association when they do their June Day Parade. And, you know, quite truthfully, one of the people that we muster by is either the governor of the Commonwealth or Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth. Many times, for example, July fourth, we'll be in a parade in Boston, where what happens is that partway through the parade we'll stop, and Wilmington, we stop in front of the Old Granary Beverly Ground, and Wilmington, along with the Mayor of Boston and some dignitaries from the Ancient and Honorable, will get out of the parade, and what we do is is that we become the Mayor of Boston's honor guard for the day, for that time, and we fire musket volleys for each of the signers of the Declaration that are buried there, as the mayor puts a wreath down. There's other events that we do, you know, we do cannon firing down in Boston, you know, we're in Austin-Brighton Parade and other events. And basically, what we're trying to do is is that helping to, you know, mustering helps us improve ourselves and make us look that much better before the community that we represent. So I don't know if you had any questions, comments?
You have the dates that you were interested in, correct?
Yeah, the dates that we talked about were Tuesdays, July nineteenth and twenty-sixth, which would keep well away from the Fourth of July festivities, and August sixteenth and August twenty-third. So there'd be four different Tuesdays we'd be looking for. We're not looking for any exclusive use of the common, we're just looking, there's probably be about, oh, maybe fifteen, maybe fifteen of us or something like that, and, you know, we'll be marching along, and just, you know, marching, we want to have our muskets there, but we don't, we'll not be doing any active firing, we will not have any gunpowder. I know last year I talked to Chief Begones, and although he couldn't comment on the location of where we were planning our muster, he didn't indicate an issue that we were to have, you know, have the muskets with us. I did place a phone call into his office, told him about the event. I haven't heard back, I don't know if he talked to any of you guys or not.
Any conflicts with the dates that we have there?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. The same rules as last year, if something comes up, the concert gets rained out or whatever. Questions or comments? Or a motion from the board?
Just the comment that I had, the last time we took this up, I voted in opposition to it, had given a number of reasons why. To me, biggest issue, I think, was the question of precedent in having various organizations come to us. I plan on voting for it this time as a, as an acknowledgement that this past year, I haven't heard any complaints, and that these folks, I believe, will work with the town if there's a scheduling conflict. I still get concerned about, you know, some of the things I was concerned about last year, but I think since we haven't had any complaints and they've lived up to their end of it, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and that's why I'd be voting for it this year.
Thank you. Questions, comments, motion?
I'd make a motion that we grant the request of those dates stipulated by Mr. West, subject to no conflict of the town.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Janus? Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Lady.
Open the status board?
Thank you. Our seven-ten appointment with Sharon George, the town clerk, and Anthony Prosky, engineer director, through the updated precinct maps. Good evening.
Thank you for having me once again in front of you. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to review the packets that I sent out. I just would like to go over what needs to happen tonight, because June fifteenth is the cutoff date for the vote on the map and all of the legal description and the other, the official block listing and the approved map. So tonight, I'll go over version one and version two, but a vote will need to be taken at that time on which option you would like to have. And the town manager has two folders, one for version one, one for version two, and whichever one you decide to vote for, the Board of Selectmen needs to sign it, then tomorrow I will true copy attest it and put all of the other materials with it, and I plan to hand deliver it up to the Secretary of State's office tomorrow. First, if anybody has any questions right away, that's something that jumped out at them from the memo or from the maps that were sent, we could do that first, and then I'll just go into going over what you have in your packet.
Anybody have any questions that jump out right this time?
Maybe before the explanation, and then we can follow up with some questions. The memorandum that we have, when it first describes draft map one, indicates that it demonstrates a huge shift of residents slash voters, and then through the rest of the memo, I see references to residents and people. So I just want to make sure I'm clear from jump, is that, is it residents or voters that we're talking about?
Well, I put slash voters, but it is residents.
It is residents, okay.
Yeah, it's residents.
Okay, that gets me, gets me started.
Okay.
Is this something that's going to happen every ten years, or you foresee it happening in --
No, it's, it happens every, every ten years, there's a federal census.
Okay.
Okay. In draft one, you can see from what Bud has sent to you, the different areas of which precincts in draft one that would have the movement of residents, and also those that would be moving polling places. This, all of these numbers come to about seven hundred, seventeen hundred approximately, and from that, it would be seven hundred and eighty-nine residents that would need to be moving polling places, and the rest would be moving just a precinct, three to four, five to, you know, something like that. So map one takes into account a great deal of movement. Now, you also got a list of streets for draft one, and that is, right now, just kind of a, well, a model to go by after the census. Everything is done with all the maps, and they're approved. Some of those streets may change a little, maybe not drastically, but there might be some changes to it. And really, with draft one, again, precinct three is, that it's downloaded, okay, at thirty-five ninety-seven. And it cuts into precinct four with this, has changes, precinct six, six has changes, five, so there's a great deal of change, but it also allows for growth with ten Burlington Avenue, if Yentl Estates gets permitted. We tried to do another version, maybe offsetting some of three into two, but precinct three has a lot of large census blocks, and it was just too difficult to try to move residents around through those census blocks. Draft map two shows that the lines that were originally, that have come down in draft map one, go back up in this model, so that there's much less change of residents moving around with draft two. There's no movement between four and six, there's a small amount of between three and four, and then five to one and two, and it comes out to about two hundred and twenty-five people that need to move polling places with draft map two versus seven hundred and eighty-nine. But what this also does is that now it's precinct three is closer to the five percent maximum, and there isn't, with ten Burlington Ave going in with a hundred and eight units, that's probably going to put precinct three in the two thousand twenty over the four thousand limit. And basically, except for six, all of our precincts, three, four, and five, are all up in the thirty-eight hundred area. But what this does is that there is not as much movement, less people will be moving polling places, moving precinct, you know, they're just going to be going from three to four, they're just getting into another line, they don't have to go anywhere. And if that's confusing, somebody's always at the door with the street map, with the list of streets saying where they need to go, and obviously, we would be doing up new street lists that would reflect the changes from the new, the final map that we get. So that, and also you've got a listing of all the streets that are involved with draft map two, which, if you noticed, was much lighter than draft map one, the number of pages. So the memo explained a lot of, and basically, I'm reiterating what's, what was in the memo, and, you know, I can take questions at this point unless there's something else on the map that you need to, you know, that you feel that's specific to some change.
Now, you had mentioned before you started that this can still change, even if we send in one or two, the streets can still change?
Right, the committee that it goes to still can have the option to change. Where's Michelle? This is Michelle Tassini, she's Director of Elections. Is that true that this?
Well, the local election district review commission is the committee that would review the maps, and basically, they would, what they're looking at is the plus or minus five percent to verify that the precincts are compact and contiguous. If there's any kind of odd issues, they might ask the town to send in a representative to ask questions about it. But generally, within the variances in both map version one and map version two, they're within the plus or minus five percent. The LEDRC had a meeting last Friday in which they approved maps that had similar variances, there weren't any issues. I think when Sharon's referring to the street listing you have, it might not be exact because they don't have the census blocks by street, so it could be that it might not be an entire street, it could be just a section of the street. And again, when you're talking about a street as the boundary, it's only one side of the street, so that's where some of the numbers play into this.
Okay.
And when Sharon was explaining about low-ending precinct three because of development in this, I can say that what we saw from the LEDRC meeting last week was that in some of the municipalities where ten years ago, they knew there was going to be development, they low-ended those precincts, and then this time, they didn't need to change them at all. There's about twenty-five of them or so that didn't.
So they do take into consideration future growth?
Well, the LEDRC will, the LEDRC is looking at numbers, but for the municipality, they were able to do that ten years ago, and now this time, they don't have to make any changes. So it was just whether you wanted, whether the town wants to anticipate growth about what would happen ten years from now, because as Sharon was explaining, if their developments are in precinct three, and it's gonna, you know, because it's on the higher end, it might push it over for the next time, so that precinct three would shift more. Because anytime you're shifting a little bit, it's a ripple effect generally on the rest of the map.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prosky, that's?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the street addresses were generated through the engineering department, they weren't given to us through the state, that's how, but the engineering department did put those together, just from our own information and parcel information.
Okay, so it could be a little variance.
Yeah, I think it's pretty accurate, but it could be a couple houses there and there that we missed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, it just seems like draft option two is less problematic than the other one. I mean, I'm sure they're both going to be fine, but it seems it's going to be less interruption on option two compared to option one?
For residents.
Right.
Draft map two is much less onerous, people will not be shifting as much. However, though, in draft map one, there are a lot of people shifting, but there's also growth potential there, and that's, I believe, in two thousand twenty, when the next federal census takes place, if there is even half the growth that there was from two thousand to two thousand ten with our precincts, because everything has to kind of even out and still be within that five percent plus or minus, so the minimum to the maximum of five percent. So I, I think at that point, I mean, I don't know, I can't read into the future, but it would look to me that we may have a lot of, you know, if we go with draft map two, we may have a lot of changes down the road in two thousand twenty. So.
I do. In the memo here, I'm trying to get a handle on the point that's being made in the memo, and I had put off asking this question to see if I somehow figured it out during your presentation. It talks about the census specialist at the Secretary of State's office, and the conversation that you had regarding the large shift of residents, and after much discussion, you requested the GIS planner to, I'll read this in quotes, because this is where I'm getting confused, "to bring up the line in precinct three to almost its original spot, which in turn uses the ripple effect upward."
Right.
I'm trying to, I don't quite get that, can you?
Okay, I'll let Bud explain.
Basically, in this version, the boundary line of precinct three was lowered. It, it kind of went into four and part of, basically both four. It was lower from its old position, the old position is the red line, okay? So precinct four went into it, and in both these areas here, okay, went into three. So the new precinct line is lower. In the, in the other option, it goes back to this particular location, partly, so that's why it went up.
All right, so to bring up the line in precinct three to almost its original spot?
Right.
You're talking about literally on your map, bringing it up in that?
Yes, correct.
I got it, all right. And then how about the ripple effect in, what's the ripple effect? I understand that four changes based on?
The ripple effect is that if on draft map one, precinct three is low-ended at thirty-five ninety-seven, and that allows for, it was low-ended so that it could allow for a certain amount of development. And in precinct map two, the ripple effect was that it went back up to, it was high-ended now, and it's up to thirty-eight nineteen, but with that, everybody else shifted, because all of this right here, this was going to go from, let's see?
It was going from three to five.
Okay.
I mean, three to four.
Right, and so that pushed all, everything back up. So that ripple effect affected mostly three, four, and five, some into two and one, but not as much as three, four, and five, because that's where people were going to be moved from one place to the other to accommodate lowering the line in precinct three, okay? And where this had so much movement, after speaking with the census specialist at the Secretary of State's office, we asked that the line be brought up to as close to as it was, say, for the two thousand census, federal census. And what that did was, it also had, you know, its ripple effect also, but not as drastically as, well, that one downloaded precinct three, this uploads precinct three because we had to move everybody back up again. Okay, so that's what the downloading and the uploading and the moving of the line means. It was this line, and you can see from here that precinct three is much more intact here than it is over here.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're good? Matt, yes? Yes? And Don?
So just as a point of clarification in saying that, you're restoring them back to, in many instances, their original position, so there really isn't a change to the resident per se?
Well, there is.
Or there is?
There is.
Okay.
Okay, two hundred and twenty-five people are going to change polling places in map version two versus seven hundred and eighty-nine residents are going to change polling places, and the rest of the seven hun, seventeen hundred will just be changing precincts.
Okay. Yeah, the number part, I'm definitely clear on, it was just moving the line up or down, if by moving it, asking them to move it back up, was that the original location back to two thousand, which in essence would be putting it as status quo, if you will, versus against another version that represented a change, if that makes any sense?
Yeah, no, you're absolutely correct. It's not exactly where it was, but it's closer to where it was.
So it's less of an impact?
Correct.
Understood.
But you have to, again, realize that with each option, option one gives precinct three future development, and option, so it's a greater disturbance, but it provides for future development. In option two, it doesn't provide that in precinct three, but it's closer to the existing boundaries as the precincts currently exist.
And basically, that's the two differences right here of these two maps?
Right.
That in and out shows.
Exactly. And the Board of Registars met again, and the minutes were given in your packet, so you could review them, and we rescinded our vote of the May nineteenth meeting, and voted on draft map two, but that was after a very long discussion between the two, the two maps, and the board voted for version two because, as the Registrar's Board, it was the least amount of impact on residents, hence on those residents being, some of them also voters.
Yeah, thank you. In certain circumstances, it seems to me it's wise to take action today. If there is maybe a financial advantage of doing so, or some other advantage of taking action today, why put it off until the future? I don't see any advantage to taking the action today to make the adjustment and go towards version one. I think, we talk hypothetically about development in precinct three area with some of the properties that you've mentioned. We could equally talk hypothetically about, as yet even considered, potential developments in precinct six. We don't know what, if any ramifications to residential development may come out of the potential for a new interchange up near the north, the Andover-Tuxbury area. So over the course of the next ten years, we can maybe hypothesize about what may happen to the populations in these precincts, but we don't exactly know. So I'm of the mind, and I think I'm hearing my colleagues say the same thing, plus we have recommendation from the Board of Registars, that map two is the least impactful today, and if there is a shift that needs to take place in ten years, we'll address it at that time. And again, I don't believe there's any additional ramifications. One thing I heard is it allows for future development, map two does, I'm sorry, map one allows for future development. I just want to make it clear that these maps have no impact on development. It allows for the, right, we're going to develop wherever it's appropriate and wherever permits get applied. It's just really in terms of how we categorize and count the folks within the respective precincts. Development will happen irrespective of how we, which vote we take.
Exactly.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
And this will all be any development from here, and even ten Burlington. and even 10 Burlington is not included in the 10, in the 2010 federal census. So all of that will be picked up by the 2000, the 2020 census.
I'm of the mind we cross this bridge in 10 years. That's all I have. Any other questions?
I know that we're discussing the map versions now, but some of the follow-on questions that I would have would be, you know, things that may maybe come out of this meeting or a future meeting is communications and effective dates. And, you know, if we were to have a special town meeting at some point before the end of the year, you know, are these people going to be notified? Do you have a project timeline in place on the back end once something is approved?
I can tell you that under state law, under General Law, Chapter 54, Section 6 and Section 10, the new precinct lines are not effective until December 31, 2011. So the first election at which they would be impacted would be the presidential primary in 2012. And a way to communicate with the residents that we've been, you know, advising different cities and towns on is every January and December, January, you have to send a street list form to every household to include a separate sheet. And that way, you can notify every household of what their polling place is at a minimal cost, consider, as opposed to identifying the specific households. So that's a way to identify and warn all of the voters as to what their polling places are. So it was a helpful reminder. And that would have a minimal impact fiscally because it's already, be included in a mailing that is already required by state law to send.
Thank you.
Can I? Yeah, sure. I just, Michelle, that.
Yes.
That, that means that we could not change the polling places prior to January 1, even if we wanted to?
You can. What, what it's saying is that basically, the way that you see both of the maps now, you see the current existing precinct lines. The question is whether you'd want to change it for the current precincts if you're having a special town meeting. It would affect the people in the current precincts. So you don't want to notify anyone of their new precincts until after their effective date or soon, so that it's not going to confuse them if there's an interceding town meeting or town election. But what, if you wanted to change any of the polling places as they would affect the precincts that are going to be used in, for, after December 31, the selectmen can take a vote at any time and then they would just need to also notify the voters. But as I said, I would, I would wait until after the effective date or close to the effective date of them. But you can definitely still shift your polling places. And it'll, it'll kind of carry over with the precincts as well.
But it says here, boundary is effective December 31, 2011.
Yes. That's just the outline of the precinct. At any time, the Board of Selectmen can change polling place.
No, 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 no. I, I don't need a polling. Could we implement any of the changes here prior to December 31?
You would need special legislation to do that.
Okay. That's, thank you.
I was listening closely to the comments that Mr. Shumpu made because I follow the logic and agree with the logic and had similar thoughts. And I thought it, that it was put very well in terms of the, the argument for draft two, option two. I came into this meeting not, I really hadn't made up my mind. I've reviewed it, but I hadn't made up my mind because I like to play devil's advocate. I wanted to hear where, where the board was going with it. Because if I make an argument for option one, it, it has to do with two things. Number one, I get your, your logic in terms of who knows what development. 10 years is a, can be a long time in terms of development. So who knows if we download three, whether or not, in fact, that will be filled up over the course of the next 10 years. And I, and I get that. But I suppose we do know, at least, that Crystal Commons appears to be a reality, and that's a significant number of people. So are we, you know, based on that level of comfort, are we asking for a wholesale change in 2020 that may be even more difficult for the residents of Wilmington than quote unquote displacing or changing something to the order of 1700 residents now? So I, I asked that question to myself, and I haven't come to an answer. The, the other thing is I'm trying to figure out a, a political reality for the residents of Wilmington. If precinct three falls outside the legislative district that the rest of, I'm in precinct six. So the rest of us, precincts one, two, four, five, and six, we're all in the, the district that Representative Mocelli has. Precinct three is Representative Murphy. And I'm, I'm just curious, in the short run, if we should be asking ourselves, are we diluting the impact that Wilmington residents have when they vote for that legislative district? And, and when I, I had asked earlier about residents versus voters because if, if we have 22,325 residents, if that's our population right now. And registered voters are, what's the number of registered voters right now?
15,000.
604.
Plus or take, plus or minus.
Yeah, 604.
So, and, and I, I thought it was around there. So just in looking at rough numbers, I looked at in the, in these spreadsheets here, in these charts, if we're talking about 1700 total residents, if we believe, well, let me look at it another way. In option one, from precinct three to precinct four is 499 residents. Let's call it 500. Two-thirds of that number is roughly 300, is 332. So we're talking, give or take, 330 registered voters that we are moving from three into four, which at least for the foreseeable future, as far as I know, would be part of that legislative district. And then in terms of option two, with 277 residents going from three to four, take two-thirds of that number is 185 people. So I, I'm sorry, voters. So I posed the question to the board, given those two possibilities, probabilities, I'm not sure, 10 years from now, will we, will we see wholesale changes anyway, given future population of precinct three? And couple that with the fact that we seem to be increasing Wilmington's stake in the 19th legislative district, Representative Mocelli's district, is that something that we should be considering? So I, you know, I really, as I say, I came into tonight's meeting saying, yeah, I, I could see the logic on both of these. Option two has the least amount of impact on the least amount of residents right now. And this doesn't seem to be one of those situations where we have to make a dramatic change now. By the same token, appears we're going to have to make a pretty dramatic change in 2020 anyways. In the meantime, does it make sense to maximize Wilmington's stake in that legislative district? So I, I throw that out there for, and it all seems to be within the plus or minus 5%. So proof of thought.
If I may, because I had given some thought. It, it had occurred to me that the legislative districts, that precinct three, you know, that it was, it was at play. I didn't crunch the numbers, to be honest with you. But it, it seemed to me that the numbers were, I hate to say negligible, because that says that those votes are negligible. They weren't large enough in my mind that it warranted offsetting my logic, I guess. But, you know, I, it's funny, sitting, you're sitting here now and hearing you out, I'm waffling a little bit. I, because your logic makes sense. So, yeah, I, I'd love to flush this out just a little bit more. Although, can we come back in two weeks? I know we can't. We've got to take some action here. I, I don't know. Help me do those numbers again. I was listening intently, but I wasn't writing. What's the total ramification on voters by, that stay in?
If, if, the way I looked at it is, again, round numbers, if two-thirds of the residents are registered voters, and that statistic holds true for current precinct three, then the, then the number of folks who would be shifted from three to four totaling 499 residents, two-thirds of that is roughly, is 332 residents. So I, in my mind, I figure, okay, 330 is the number of residents. By, by effectuating this change, if we were to adopt option one, 330 residents would change their legislative, their legislative district would be changed by this action. Right? And then draft two, which is the less, you know, has less impact in terms of the number of residents affected. If you carry that same logic in terms of percentages, 185 registered voters would, would have their legislative district changed. So the difference between 330 and 185 is 145? And, and I, I didn't, I didn't sell myself on this either, but I was curious what, what the rest of the board thought of it. And, and I guess that's especially in light of the fact, how much do we buy into the fact the precinct three is going to be loaded? I think in and of itself, I dismiss it and go with option two. But when you figure in the fact we have Crystal Commons appears to be coming online, and, you know, we're setting ourselves up for a wholesale change in 2020, I don't know. Anybody who wants to sell me, I'm, I'm all ears.
Now, I hear what you're saying. I understand you're talking about legislative delegation, and, you know, the legislative body and the amount of people, you know? And it's about 150 votes. But I think maybe someday, I think I'd pull some votes from Tuxbury or something, not really concerned about it. You know? So I'd go with option two to make it a little bit less, a little bit easier for everybody. So I, I hear you.
The, the point of just the sheer numbers too, we're saving the, from 17 to three to 502. If we go with that, the option two, who's to say 10 years from now, to save those 1,200, we might not have to move 2,000 or a much bigger difference? Just in, I'm not talking voters, I'm just talking the, the physical move itself.
Well, 10 Burlington Ave has 108 units, I believe, that's going to be coming online. And if each unit contains a family of four, just at 100, that's 400 people. And, you know, and it depends, it's not just precinct three that might have development. Again, that construction ripple effect, if it goes into, you know, I'm sure in other precincts, there may be some development also over the next 10 years. So I think in 2020, though, there would be some big changes.
In raw numbers, precinct, I'm sorry, version one would have 222 more people in, in Representative Mocelli's district.
People.
People.
Right. The same, depends on when you take your two-thirds.
Right.
Put you at that 145 range.
Right. And then the Crystal Commons, I mean, it wouldn't, all due respect, it wouldn't be 400 people because we're talking about, you know, half one-bedroom apartments and a few two-bedroom apartments. So, you know, basing that against the figures that we're familiar with at the, you know, at the other locations, and this would be a rental. We're probably looking at a couple 100 people. But still, there's, again, that, that district, the Burlington Bedford one precinct in Wilmington district would probably climb closer to 500 more people. And by your way of figuring things, two-thirds, you know, we're talking, again, 330 or so voters. So there is a political consideration, I guess, that could be given to these numbers.
Yeah. And the other number that I hadn't really ferreted out until I was sitting here now is, again, if we look at, I think that the three things, the three changes, if you will, that folks in the audience have recognized, the board has recognized, and certainly the folks, Board of Registarians and Sharon and Bud recognized in previous meetings is, the three kinds of changes are changing precincts, changing poll locations, and changing legislative districts. And if you look at the, the number of residents changing polling locations, which to me is a much more noticeable inconvenience for a resident and voter than simply changing precincts within a polling location. Because you show up and they're going to get you in the rent line anyways, right? But the changes in polling locations is 789 people. And again, if you take your two-thirds, that's, two-thirds of that number is 526. Versus option two, the number of residents changing a polling location is 225. What's two-thirds of 225? Is 175. 526 minus 175. It's about 351 registered voters in today's. The difference in numbers of voters who change polling locations.
Right.
Version one versus version two is 350 people. So, you know, I don't want to trivialize the inconvenience to 351 people. That's, that's, that's real. I don't trivialize that. But it's not quite the same inconvenience as 1700 versus 500, you know? So I, again, I'm, I can be convinced on this one. I just, I, I, when I thought about those numbers, I thought, what if in a few years, you know, there's a hotly contested race in that legislative district and, and a Wilmington resident loses by 115 votes? Am I, am I going to look back at this vote and wonder if we hadn't thought about it? If we make a conscious decision, then, then so be it. You know? It is what it is.
I think it's a very valid statement, what you just made. And if you, you know, I'm also in, in sex, so. But I, I do think that, you know, you make a change, people get notified. And yes, you know, Wilmington, it's not like it's miles and miles apart. You know, it, from the front end, it will be somewhat of an inconvenience. But, you know, voting power stays with you annually. And, you know, that metric is going to carry annually. So even though maybe an election doesn't necessarily take place in that regard annually, but it certainly, certainly is how we all ended up here. So, you know, and some of these elections can be really close. And it comes down to, you know, if you, just having even looked at the selectmen's race over the past 10 years, some candidates, there can be as much as 100 vote difference. So it is statistically significant, I think, at a local level. So it is a compelling statement to me.
And who's to say 10 years from now, you're not talking about double that amount of inconvenienced voters?
On the precinct.
Yeah. Or on the precinct.
By using two, you're causing, like, police change to precinct three. It's 17 people. You know, as you're coming into precinct three, you're down the side across. On one, on, on draft two, there's less change to precinct three.
And, and in your mind, that's a, that's a positive net result just because it's less change to that legislative district?
Less change to there and the legislature, just the, the actual change. When you look at the maps and the colors there. And we're close enough to the 4,000 a precinct that we could be going another precinct at least.
Michelle, what's the population of precinct three?
The, for 2010 or for what it was before?
2010.
It, from precinct three, is that what you asked?
Yeah.
It was 3,680. It, it went up 416 to 4,096. That's why there's such a dramatic change. And as far as, the next biggest one was precinct five. It, it used, in 2000, it was 3,701, was increased by 330. And that is over the 4,000. It's 4,031. It, in 2000, it was 3,701, was increased by 330, and that is over the 4,000, it's 4,031. Those were the two largest gains, right? So that forced the realignment of all the precincts. One and two, it was just slight changes, hardly any. Four and six had moderate changes.
Any other questions, comments, or motions from the board?
Yeah, I'm going to, here, raise some more here. I'm going to, as I sit listening to all of this, a couple of things occurred to me. One was, we talked about political ramifications, and I want to make sure, speaking for myself anyway, and I suspect I speak for others on this board, that's not self-serving political. You know, we're all politicians, so to speak, but I think what we're talking about here is, what's the advantage to Wilmington? And every decision that I make, when I sit here, and as a member of this board, I have to try to think of, what's the best thing to do for the overall population, the people of Wilmington? So we start thinking about the ramifications to 350 or so people being dislodged, or being, having to change their polling location, and the logistics of communicating that information to them, and there's a little bit of inconvenience associated with them identifying where they need to go. Then we also think about the ramifications of, at least I have to think about, the ramifications of who the state representative is, and in my mind, I think it's best that we have a state representative that ideally is someone from Wilmington, that has Wilmington's interests at heart, not to suggest that Representative Murphy doesn't, or someone else potentially, but I like the homey kind of thing, I want one of my guys in there representing Wilmington. And I think if that's the case, and if we have a Wilmington person at the House representing our community, that's the best scenario for the residents of this town, and overall for the town, in spite of the fact that we now have caused some inconvenience to some folks. So, I'm pulling a Mitt Romney on you here, live, on WCTV. I'm flipping. I'm flipping for that reason. I started saying that number two seemed to be the direction to go, given the recommendations. I think that it's best for Wilmington, over the course of the next 10 years, and each, and the elections that go on through those 10 years, that we select option one for that reason.
Can you still call?
I can't top that.
Sure you can, go ahead and try.
You make a very good point.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? See it done? Any more questions or comments from the board, or perhaps a motion?
I don't want to discourage Mr. Newhouse from making comment, it looks like he's building.
No, no, actually, no, I've just been listening.
That said, then I would like to move that this board vote in favor of approving draft map number one, version one, for, I'm not sure what the rest of the language ought to be in this motion, but that we approve option one.
The precinct map.
I'll second that. I, as I said, I really believe both alternatives, I understand the logic to both, I don't see how anybody could be critical of either side of that decision, they both are logical. I'm sitting here, listening, and Mr. Shampoo, I think has made a compelling case, so I'm going to follow suit on that.
Motion made in second, I'm in favor to accept draft map one.
Oppose?
Want to oppose? Thank you.
You're welcome. It'll go up to the State House tomorrow with your signatures.
Setting up the next presentation. Okay, our 7:30, 8 o'clock appointment is with Jeffrey Hull, the Assistant Town Manager, and Ed Burns from EBS Foreign for municipal health insurance reform.
Good evening.
Mr. Hull, good evening.
While Ed's powering up the PowerPoint, let me just introduce why we're here this evening. Ed Burns is from EBS Foreign, they're the town's health insurance advisor, and we work with Ed and his firm with respect to the rates that are considered for our health insurance plans, and also the strategies and approaches that we use to try to control, or at least moderate, some of the increases in our health insurance. So this evening, the primary intent of our presentation is to talk to the board about the two options that are, were presented and adopted as bills by the state legislature with respect to giving municipalities more opportunity to influence plan design. And I'm sure you've probably read and heard about the House bill and the Senate bill that allow the town some limited ability to change co-pays and deductibles for our health insurance. This has been an issue that cities and towns working with the Mass Municipal Association have been pursuing for a number of years now, essentially making the case that cities and towns ought to have the same level of authority and discretion that the GIC, which is the Government Insurance Commission, has at the state level. So the GIC is able to make these kind of changes without going through full-blown collective bargaining with the state employees. Currently, under Chapter 32B, which is the governing law for municipal employees, if we were to make a change in a deductible or a copay, we would have to engage in collective bargaining, either successor bargaining or impact bargaining. So this is really, these proposals that are now in conference are probably the town's best opportunity to this point in being able to have a measure of influence over making those changes. So with that, well, first of all, before we get into the specific discussion about the two proposals, given that we have had very limited ability to make changes ourselves, one of the things that we've done to try to moderate health insurance costs is to change the plan offerings. For the longest time, I'm guessing since, since health insurance first became available to employees, the town had one health insurance plan, and that was Master Medical, which is an indemnity plan, and it does not have much in the way of cost containment or preventive medicine elements to it. So in 2003, that was the first, during open enrollment in 2003, that was the first year that we offered alternatives to Master Medical, and we offered an HMO plan, Network Blue, which is also a Blue Cross Health Insurance Plan, but it provides some features that are designed to still provide the quality of coverage that we want employees to have, but also provide some cost containment measures. And we offered another Blue Cross plan called Blue Choice. A couple of years later, we modified that to Blue Care Elect, which is a preferred provider plan, so that it allows employees to stay within network, and you have a certain level of coverage. If you go out of network, the coverage is a little less advantageous, or a little less comprehensive. So at the beginning of all of this, we had about 680 employees that were covered by Master Medical, which, as I say, is a very expensive plan. Over the last seven years, eight years, through collective bargaining and through, essentially, the power of persuasion, and just looking at the numbers in terms of what employees can save, we've been able to persuade the vast majority of employees to move out of Master Medical, so that at this point, we're down to 35 employees in the Master Medical plan. So that's really the primary focus that we've had over the last seven or eight years in terms of trying to moderate the health insurance cost to the town. But with that, I'll introduce Ed, and he can go through with you what the differences are between the House and Senate plan. It's my understanding that the Conference Committee is going to be coming up with a version that can be voted upon by the legislature, and ultimately the governor, within the next week or so, that's at least the projection. Ed?
Well, thanks for having me out here tonight. I can start this off with the fact that I am not a lawyer, so I'm trying to interpret legalese here, which is never really the easiest thing in the world to do. There's actually three bills.
Do we need, can we just ask cable, will you the light pop?
Yeah, I think we can say it.
You're okay? I'm sorry.
There's actually three bills out there, because there's the governor's bill, which is still out there, and then there's the House version and the Senate version. So those are the three bills, and it's right in, it's in committee right now, being discussed, and I'm sure compromise being worked on. But just to get started here, the governor first came out with a bill, and it mandated that all municipalities provide health insurance to their subscribers, either through the Group Insurance Commission, the municipal segment of the Group Insurance Commission, because state employees are in one trust, and municipalities are joined or in a separate trust, or through any other means where you'd get benefits of comparable actuarial value to those provided by the GIC. So the first question anybody would ask is, what, how do you define comparable actuarial value? It's never been defined, so we don't know what it is. Two ways, the leaning of the House and Senate, and I believe probably the leaning of the governor is, comparable actuarial value, I believe, is just the same co-pays. To me, being, you know, most of 40 years doing this stuff, I've been an underwriter most of my life, an actuarial value should actually come from premium equivalencies. And, but that, I don't think is the way they're leaning. They're looking at co-pays. In order to join the GIC, there's a few things you have to do. You've already done Section 18 is a requirement, and that's just simply Medicare-eligible employees are required to enroll in a Medicare Supplement Plan, rather than staying in one of the active, more expensive plans. So they're required to adopt, or to apply for Medicare Part B, and then have, they have A, B, and a supplemental medical plan. Another requirement is the adoption, local adoption of Section 19, which is coalition bargaining. This is where you put together a public employee committee, which is a representative of each of the unions, plus a representative, a retiree representative, and they actually sit on a board, so you're bargaining with everybody all at once. And retirees are automatically given a 10% vote, and as it stands currently, in order to adopt anything through the P, Public Employee Committee, they'd have to get a 70% vote in favor of whatever change it was. So you come up with, you come up, the executive administration would come up with a plan, whether that be joining the GIC, or whether that be developing an actuarial equivalent plan, and present to the Public Employee Committee. If it's agreed upon, you're fine, you go move it. It's not, if you reach impasse, then a mediator would be assigned by the Secretary of Finance, I believe, and that mediator would make a decision. And that decision could be just to join the GIC, they could put you in the GIC, or that mediator could try to adopt the plan developed by the executive or the administration, not sure which would actually happen in this case. Just as an aside, GIC has some issues with it, it has the, it's actually 32A is the governing body for state employees, and it does have some differences in it that could cause some problems, such as eligibility is different, number of hours worked is different for the state than it is for municipalities, and that could cause your actual enrollment population to go higher. So that's obviously not necessarily a good option. The House bill that was voted on April 26th, once again, this is in its current stance, we don't know how it's going to come out of committee, but it would be a local option adopted by the Executive Board. And this one's a little simpler, it's a little bit more wide open. The executive or administration would present a new plan design to the Public Employee Committee, and it's just set up, as it's noted in Section 19, but it's not a formal, it's not a permanent Public Employee Committee, it's just done temporarily to reach agreement here. So the governmental group and the Public Employee Committee would have 30 days to reach agreement on the new plan design. Part of that plan design would be 10% of the savings that would be noted to the Public Employee Committee as part of the negotiation. 10% of that money would be set aside to, for wellness programs, for health reimbursement accounts, some way to mitigate the deduct, the copay increases, or the addition of deductibles, whatever it happens to be. And if no agreement is reached, and the plan design is equal to or less than the GIC's most populated plan, which currently is the Tufts Navigator Plan, the changes can be made unilaterally. Simply, if no agreement's reached with Public Employee Committee, you can just go ahead and make the changes, as long as those, the co-pays or the plan design is equal to or less than the GIC's most populated plan. But because no agreement was reached upfront, you have, now you have to share 20% of the savings. So I don't exactly know what that means, but I know what I would do. If I, I'd just wait and get the 20% rather than 10%. But that's the way it's written currently. And one other thing is, if you could develop greater savings by joining the GIC, you can join the GIC also. It's just, this thing's pretty wide open, it allows you to do a lot of things. Contributions, no change, they're still subject to 150E collective bargaining, so you still have to negotiate contributions. That's pretty much it. A month later, we get the Senate bill. Once again, it's a local option adopted by the Executive Board. Once again, you propose a plan to modernize the design of the healthcare plans with co-pays, with or without co-pays, deductibles, any of the changes at all. This time, they've got a new word, they, it's got to be at or below the median GIC plan, or you go directly into the GIC. The median GIC plan, and I'm not a mathematician of any great note, but to me, it's, you know, you take a bell curve, and you get to the highest point of the bell curve, and that's the median, well, to me, that's the most populated plan too, but they have to use a different term. These things are a little bit scary right now, too, because they, right now, today, they can be defined as the Tufts Navigator Plan. Most of the co-pays are pretty similar in all the GIC plans, but there are some differences with, you know, tiered networks, and very, some very confusing things, especially to employees. But that median plan is going to change. The most populated plan is going to change July 1st, because the state is forcing, you know, they're doing what they call a positive enrollment. What that means is, like most employees, you know, you come to your health fair time, your open enrollment period, and everyone does nothing, because that just means they're staying in the plan they were in last year. Well, if you do nothing in the GIC, they move you to one of the limited network plans, which are shrunken networks that don't have all the hospitals, don't have all the providers. So that's, that's what they're calling a positive enrollment. That's going to shift where the most, where the most bodies are, unless people are actually paying attention and making their own elections the way they're supposed to. But, so you do this, you modernize the health, you change all the co-pays, as long as it's at or below the median plan, you're fine. You have to divulge to the temporary Public Employee Committee the projected one-year cost avoidance by making all of these changes. Then you propose a plan to mitigate, or as I've said here, mitigate or moderate the impact on high utilizers, retirees, and/or low-income employees. These are all just suggestions on the part of the Senate. But what they want you to do is, they want you to set up a fund in some manner, some creative manner, to help some of the high utilizers from, to avoid some of these giant co-pays that they're going to run into. It's co-pays that they're going to run into. It's either high co-pays or repetitive type co-pays. Communities, once again, have to convene a Public Employee Committee. It's temporary, as I've said there. The community and the Public Employee Committee have 30 days to reach an agreement on this new plan design, the 10% savings, and the plan to moderate the increase to, or the impact to high utilizers. If no agreement is reached in, and you add an impasse, it will be referred with a three-member panel. You've got one municipal representative, one union representative, and an impartial third party selected from a list of experts, and once again, it's from the Secretary of Finance. And the panel has 10 days to decide three matters. Whether the plan design are at or lower than the median GIC plan, they've got to agree on what the one-year cost avoidance will be, and whether the proposal to mitigate or moderate impact is sufficient. That can be no more than 33% of the cost avoidance. So what they're doing is transferring a full third back to the employees for some sort of mitigation fund. The difference with this one is if the municipality's proposed plan is determined by the mediator to be at or lower than the median plan, then the mediator has an obligation at that point to accept and implement those plan changes. Now, they still haven't decided what they're going to do with the third of the money, and they still haven't decided, you know, all these other things, but the plan design can be implemented immediately. So that's an important consideration of the Senate bill. Another little stickler I actually found the other day was no changes can be made, cannot take place until after the term of the current arrangement expires. So if you're in the middle of a collective bargaining agreement or term, say you're, you know, a year and a half in, you've got to wait, unless you can get the Public Employee Committee to agree to change it. Another little gotcha they threw in here is, and it really doesn't impact the town of Wilmington, so I'll do it real quick. The same contribution percentage required by plan, same as the GIC. You have one contribution percentage for all of your plans, whether they're active or retirees, so it really doesn't impact you here. But I have a lot of people that have different co-pay, different contribution percentages based upon the type of plan, whether it's a PPO, indemnity, HMO, or whether it's retirees. All of them have to be consistent. And the one that's getting us now is, I have a lot of communities where the retirees are, the contribution rate is 50%, whereas it's, you know, 75 for the active employees. Well, the second gotcha is the percentage contributed by retirees or surviving spouses has to be, can be no more than the average percentage contributed by other subscribers for the most expensive and least expensive plans. So in your case, if you were, had retirees at 50%, you'd have to bring them all the way up to 75. So it's a cost killer for a ton of my communities. Not here, it has no impact here, but it's a painful one. That's pretty much the presentation. We can go back and discuss any of these things. Once again, I think Jeff is right. The rumors I've heard is that it's going to come out of the Conference Committee, you know, around the 20th or, you know, just a couple, a week or two away.
Thank you.
The odd one I heard is that they might not implement it until next year. I just heard that one this morning.
How many municipalities do you work with?
We have just roughly 65, 70 in Massachusetts.
And how is Wilmington not ranked, but how we are doing business here with the insurances and the?
Quite honestly, we've had a long run of great success, you know, here in Wilmington. I think over the past five or six years, we're probably averaging, if we were to average it out over that six-year period, there were mid-single-digit probably average rate increases. We had a couple of years with zeros, back-to-back, I believe.
Yeah.
And this year actually was, medical care inflation's 10%, and that's what the average increase was, was 10%.
Very good. Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all in favor of saving taxpayers' monies, and I know this is something that we're going to have to address and take a look at in the future. Now, obviously, under the town charter, the town manager is the chief fiscal officer, and I would want to rely on his expertise and his opinion on the direction that we would take. I know exactly what I would do, I'm saying as time goes on. We need to really look at this, we need to address it. I mean, healthcare costs is going through the roof. I mean, forget about municipal plans or group plans, individuals that live in the town or live anywhere in the Commonwealth, the rates have gone up probably double in the last six years. I know, as a small businessman, I pay for my own health insurance and it goes up and up and up, it never goes down, and it's, the way I look at it, to be honest, I tell my wife, we could be driving three Cadillac Escalades a month, we're paying, and it's not even the best plan. And that's just me. I can imagine the folks out there that don't have the funds and able to have health insurance. But as a member of the Board of Selectmen, obviously, you know, interest in the taxpayers, that's the direction that I would want to go, listen to the manager, number one. And number two, I live in the real world, I know things are expensive, and I think individuals have to realize that. We need to look at options. I mean, I'm a person who likes to look at options, I think everybody here likes to look at options, and I think the board has done that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your time.
Just quickly, I agree with what's been said and specifically would think that, you know, as things unfold on Beacon Hill, then we can get a, you know, clear recommendation from the management.
Certainly want to re-echo what was already stated. Quick question on the 10% or the 20% avoided costs, is that for year one of the adoption?
Yes, yes. And that actually has been further defined, it is a one-year arrangement.
I hadn't seen it on a previous publication that the town manager had sent to us in an email, but I wanted just to make sure that that hasn't changed.
Yeah, and that's true of both the Senate and House bill, it's both of them, they were a one-year deal of what to do with the cost avoidance.
Does, you know, some of your commentary about, you know, obviously, the 10% versus the 20%, it kind of really prompts decisions on, that might be made on either party, so it's very interesting, some of the crafting here.
Thank you for your presentation and for helping clear some of this up, although notwithstanding your great presentation, it's still a little fuzzy, I've got to be honest with you. I guess I want to compliment the Governor and the two branches of our legislation for taking this issue on. It has remained a complete riddle to me, and it still does, as to what justification there could be offered that says that the state employees get one set of rules, but that municipal and town employees get a different set of rules. I still don't get it, and unfortunately, they just, you know, we're still, now we're looking at this convoluted, potentially convoluted plan. It seems it would be easier if we just said, okay, let's just live by their rules and everyone will be happy, but it isn't to be. I guess I also want to compliment Town Manager Kyra and you, Jeff, Assistant Town Manager Jeff Hall, for the hard work that you've done over the past, I guess, eight to 10 years in minimizing the town's exposure with regards to Master Medical. So, I mean, thank you for that. That said, the question I would have to you, and I've kind of raised it to you in the past in various formats, and I don't necessarily need you to give me numbers, but depending on what iteration of this comes out, with the number of folks that we have on Master Medical now, do you see, do you foresee changes that will be enacted being beneficial to the operations of the town? Do you see how we can exercise benefit, cost-saving benefits that we haven't already done through collective bargaining through the years in getting folks over to the HMOs?
With the passage of some form of this bill?
Right.
You know, I think depending upon what the final version is, it may give us an opportunity to make additional savings or at least moderate the increases that we're seeing. You know, everything that, I don't think it's realistic to expect our health insurance costs to go down. The real goal in any of this is to moderate the level of increase. I mean, it's just the whole institution of health insurance is, the structure and so on is such that the costs are going to go up. The key is trying to moderate those increases.
Thank you. One of the things that strikes me is the creation of new bureaucracies, I forget where it was, but it, I don't know in what form, the three-member panel that will be created, these new panels that are going to be created, you know, slowing down, in my opinion, more bureaucracy, more talking heads, more paperwork, and more emails, and more meetings, and, you know, is that necessarily the most effective, most efficient way to handle business? I don't, it's not a question, it's really just an observation that, you know, instead of making things simpler and easier, which would typically translate to savings in costs, it seems like we're making things more complicated in some regards, so. Anyway, but thank you very much for the information and presentation.
That's it. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Get some dust out of your way here.
Chairman of Correspondence from Margaret Hurley, the Assistant Attorney General to the Town Clerk regarding the Wilmington Town Meeting of April 30th, in which she indicates that they've approved the amendments to the town bylaws adopted under Articles 23, 24, and 30. 23 and 24 was relative to the chief's proposals on, why am I blanking on the words, on the, pawn shops, pawn shops, secondhand goods, et cetera. They approved those articles as they were presented. Also, there was a zoning map change in Article 30 that was approved. I note on Article 22, which was the curfew bylaw, they indicate that they're retaining the amendments that were adopted under Article 22 for further review, and they will issue their decision prior to August 24th. So of those three major bylaw changes, the two on the regulation of the pawn shops were adopted, Article 22 on the curfew is still under review. We have correspondence from Carl Knoll, the President and CEO, as well as Jess Phelps, the team leader for historic preservation of historic New England relative to the Winifred Richardson Estate. Mr. Knoll wrote to me indicating that historic New England was chosen by the trustee of the Richardson Trust to receive title to the Richardson Farm and all of the contents located at 280 Wubin Street. He indicates the real estate transfer has closed and they've taken possession of the property. He writes that "We understand and appreciate the town's interest in preserving this historic resource, and they would like to have the opportunity to meet later this month to review their plans." And so it's my understanding that Jess Phelps will be calling us to schedule a meeting. There is a letter attached, which was a letter that you've also received that was sent to Terry McDermott of the Historical Commission, again, reiterating this, what was just said by Mr. Knoll, but there is one interesting sentence in the first paragraph, which says, "This letter is to update you on our plans for this historic residence and to offer assurances that your role as the primary custodian of Wilmington local history artifacts will be recognized as we evaluate the contents and prepare to sell the house with protective easements in place." So it appears as though it's their intent to sell the property. We did have Lou Ross, the town's counsel on this matter, review the copy of that letter, and he indicates that it appears the historic New England, after it removes the personal property from the Richardson Estate property, intends to sell the property to a third party, and apparently has no intention of maintaining the property. He indicates that may be acceptable to the town, but this is probably the first time that we're hearing about that. I will meet with the representatives of historic New England and then get back to the board to get any advice that you may have or counsel, you know, and also speak to historic New England in terms of the town of Wilmington having whatever role it can play with regard to the preservation of this property. Just wanted to bring to the board's attention the correspondence that was sent to Chairman Samaglia from Robert Groves, the Director of the United States Department of Commerce regarding the 2000 census, and we provide this information to the press as well, and really what it is is a profile of the town of Wilmington in terms of its demographics, and we just provide that information to you, so I know from time to time, people are asking you about the town's population or any of the other various statistics that are included in a demographic of this nature. I believe every community has received this now, and this also discusses population breakdowns by age and race, as well as various household and housing characteristics. The board has a copy of a Mass Municipal Association action alert regarding a legislation that's been proposed to restrict the use of municipal land. The MMA is opposed to this. I believe the town and previous iterations of this kind of legislation has also expressed its concern. The House Bill 3438 would go beyond what we now have that was established by an amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution in 1997. That amendment states that lands and easements taken or acquired for purposes shall not be used for other purposes or otherwise disposed of except by laws enacted by a two-thirds vote of each branch of the General Court, so that if we wanted to change conservation land, we would have to go through a process that we always were aware of. It would also include going to town meeting and getting Conservation Commission approval, and then getting a two-thirds vote by the Legislature. That seems to be a pretty high standard to meet. This legislation goes beyond that standard, and it essentially undermines local decision-making authority regarding such land and imposes restrictions on cities and towns by requiring that municipal public land acquired for natural resource purposes not ever be disposed of or converted to other uses without a costly demonstration process to prove that there is no feasible alternative. So we think this is a, we would agree with the MMA that this legislation would place an undue and unnecessarily costly burden to communities and to taxpayers, and we think the standard that is currently in place is sufficient.
Is this something you've contacted our representatives or the board?
We can do that, Chairman, on behalf of the board. The board has correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding the regional update meeting for selectmen in Middlesex County. It'll be held on June 29th, 2011. If anybody's interested in registering, they can do so directly or contact Beverly, and she can make sure that you are registered. Again, it's going to be held on June 29th in Lexington. The board's also received notice from the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization regarding a public workshop that is going to be held to discuss the Boston Region MPO structure. And there are three different meetings scheduled on June 15th, June 21st, and June 22nd. The board has a letter from Jane Lyman of Comcast regarding changes to Comcast Xfinity programming, and again, they write just to notify the board of various changes, both to basic services and other special entertainment packages. All of this information has been sent to the subscribers of Xfinity Comcast. The board's being asked to consider requests from Peter Christopoulos of Pete's Ice Cream to obtain a Hawken Petal to sell ice cream. We have favorable recommendations from the Health Director, Shelley Newhouse, and a favorable recommendation based on a background check from the Chief of Police, Michael Begonis. This would be the official ice cream vendor at Silver Lake as well. And they participate in a competitive bid with regard to the Lake concession, and they were the, in this case, the high bidder for permission to sell at Silver Lake. So we would need a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comments, or a motion?
Move to grant the request.
A second.
Motion made second, on favor.
Can you answer?
Thank you. Board has been asked to consider issuing a Sunday entertainment license to Fiesta Shows in conjunction with the Fourth of July celebration. As the board knows, whenever there is need for a, to run the carnival portion of the Fourth of July activities on a Sunday, the board knows whenever there is need for a, Fourth of July activities on a Sunday, the Board is required to issue a Sunday entertainment license if they see fit. We received recommendations from Chief Begonis, who indicates that he recommends approval of the request as submitted, and we also received a recommendation from Chief Bradbury, who also indicates that there are no outstanding issues with the vendor. As in past years, the police chief reviews the backgrounds of all of the employees of the carnival, and they've done that, and are satisfied at this point.
They have all the queries of all the...
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motion?
Move to grant the request.
Second. Motion made second, on favor. Unanimous?
The Board is being asked to consider the request of Christina Stewart, the Library Director, to use the Town Common Parking Lot on Saturday, September 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to conduct the Second Annual Community Fair. The original community fair was held in 2010, and a number of nonprofit organizations participated at that time, and we believe there will be a number of additional organizations participating There will also be the Paper Shredding Company there at no charge to residents who will be on-site for bulk shredding of paper items. Residents will be able to, again, have these documents shredded at no cost. In addition, the Farmers Market will have some farm vendors at the fair. There are also, that assumes permission from the Board of Selectmen, they've indicated that to the Farmers Market. They're also planning a Wilmington Birthday Cake Contest in honor of the incorporation of the town on September 25th, and they will be inviting residents to decorate a cake that best depicts Wilmington. So there are, the only other activity in that area at that time is, there is a wedding that the Board approved, but that does not take place until 2:00 p.m., so we would endeavor to make sure that there is ample cleanup prior to that time.
This was a nice event the first year, last year. Any questions, comments, or motion?
Agreed, it was a very nice event last year, and I think, talking with Tina, she said that she learned from some of the mistakes she may have made last year in terms of marketing the event, and she's excited about this taking off and being remarkably successful, even more successful than it was last year. So I'm excited that it's coming back. I would make a motion that we approve the use of the Town Common Parking Lot on September 24th for this event.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, on favor. Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, Board is being asked to review the determination of the Massachusetts State Athletic Commission to issue a license to Joseph Cavalaro to conduct a mixed martial arts event at the Shriners Auditorium on June 18th, 2011. I provided the Board with copies of the information that I received on this. We originally got an email on June 6th from Ronnie Dreimer, who is Program Coordinator of the Massachusetts State Athletic Commission, informing us that on that particular date, June 6th, they issued a license to this individual to conduct an event at the Shriners, and they advised us of the new statute, General Law Chapter 147, Section 47A, which says by majority vote of the Board of Selectmen, they may prohibit the event in honor of revocation of the license. I wrote back immediately and asked Ms. Dreimer to provide the office with information about the event, in order that I may provide information to the Board, and she did provide me with a copy of the license for this particular activity, indicating that they were approved. Also talked with Chief Begonis, this is a mixed martial arts fighting event that has been held at the Shriners for the past several years. Originally, the Boxing Commission did not have statutory jurisdiction over such events, the Boxing Commission was really a euphemism for the State Athletic Commission. But recent legislative change indicates that it's now regulated, and the Board of Selectmen must give approval for the event to go forward, or by approval, they have the opportunity to say, to say no. The chief recommends that there, or indicates there has not been any problems, and would recommend that the Board not take action to revoke any license.
So not granting them a license?
They're not granting the license, they're just not asking license to be revoked.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motion?
Based on that recommendation, I move the Board take no action to revoke.
I'd second it.
Motion made second, on favor. Unanimous?
That concludes the regular business, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Public comments? Mr. Logan.
George Leonfelter, Logan Commerce Street, wanted to ask a follow-up question to a question I asked last week in regards to Massachusetts General Law, you weren't here, Mr. Chairman. It was a question in regards to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 49, Section 1, fence viewers, and I was wondering if there was any additional information on whether or not Wilmington has a fence viewer, or anticipates it may have one, or actually it says a law cluster, two.
Fence viewer?
Fence viewer, yes.
We had, when I had acted as Chairman in your absence, we acknowledged that input and referred it to council, so I'm sure we'll have some feedback at some point.
I don't have information yet, but we'll get feedback.
No feedback. Thank you.
Town Council was contacted, I guess. Any other public comments?
Yeah, coming up, there's probably you guys are going to read it, the flag retirement ceremony, you've got 6:00 p.m., that's when we're assembling, the public's invited at 7:00, so if you could just inform yourselves and the viewers at 7:00 o'clock tomorrow for the flag ceremony.
Thank you. New Business Committee reports?
Briefly, High School Building Committee met again today after numerous meetings in three public forums. The committee has now referred the conceptual preliminary design for a new building and for a renovation project to MSBA. The committee, and as I'm told, the school committee both unanimously voted the alternative of a new building, perhaps to support that before MSBA. Perhaps you could have representatives of the committee in at a future meeting, and MSBA, under the schedule, is supposed to take action on that preferred preliminary schematic design in late July.
Okay. Thank you, and everybody that's on that committee, I know you guys meet fairly often, especially recently, not counting the public meetings that you're at, but I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done on that committee. And also, yeah, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have them in, like we did three meetings ago, three, four meetings ago, maybe longer. Very good. Thank you. Is that it? So, Colonel?
Just having attended one of those, or all of those public sessions, there's still so much left to do in this regard, and just for the public to, you know, stay updated, whether it's on the local website, or through the town crier, or contacting, you know, your local school, whatever question Jim may have, there's still, you know, more details that will be continuing to unfold. I know that there's important dates that are going to be announced by the town manager. This coming weekend is the Relay for Life. Very flattered to receive an invitation. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm also participating on a team, and will be walking, it will be the third annual event, and so I'm looking forward to certainly working together with the community for a very worthy cause. Unfortunately, all of us have been somehow affected by cancer, and people that we love and care for, so as much as it's a celebration of life, it's a way as a community that we can take up arms against an insidious disease such as this, and that we can bond together so that this generation and future generations can certainly hold the dream of someday living in a world that cancer doesn't exist. So I look forward to bonding with the community as a group, and certainly, it's mixed emotions, but it is a celebration of life and something for all of us to take part in. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy, well said. I want to compliment everyone that came to the High School Forum, was it last week? I guess it was. Those forums are so important, I've mentioned it before, and I'll mention it again, there will be more opportunities for you to participate in this process, but at the end of the day, I just, I want to encourage, and it's been said, but I want to continue to encourage residents to take part in every opportunity that is presented, to become and stay educated on the process, as well as the information that's coming out of this process. I'm often asked questions, hey, where are we with the high school project? And I'm always glad to answer from the perspective that I have, but the information is available, it's out there, it's on the website, and so, you know, again, just avail yourself of the myriad resources and sources of information that exist, and take part in this process. I'm looking forward to, as Ms. O'Connell said, I'm very much looking forward to seeing a great turnout of residents at the Relay for Life. It really shows off Wilmington in its, at its finest, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. And I would ask anyone who sees me on the way out over the next 15 minutes to not tell me anything about the Bruins game that's been on now for 45 minutes, as I have it on DVR. And thank you very much.
Okay. I would just like to mention Memorial Day weekend, I think it was a beautiful turnout again by the residents of Wilmington, not only for the parade, but all the ceremonies down at the cemetery, and all the week-long, the weekend-long activities that we did, and Wilmington once again did itself proud.
And I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, I think you did a great job. It was a great, beautiful day, and I think you did an outstanding job putting it together, along with your colleagues there. It was a good time.
Thank you. I had nothing to do with the weather.
Come on.
Important dates.
Important dates, Mr. Chairman. Just before I get to that, I don't want to prolong your, stay away from the Bruins, but I did get a call from Representative Charlie Murphy's office this afternoon relative to House Bill 3455, which is the bill that has to do with the change in the town charter for the residency of the town manager that was passed overwhelmingly at the recent annual town meeting. There is going to be a hearing on that bill on Wednesday, and I will go in and testify on behalf of the town. The hearing is before the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government, and I'll report back to the Board at the next meeting.
Thank you.
In terms of important dates, as been mentioned, the flag retirement ceremony at Minuteman Headquarters at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow, June 14th. Certainly, the Relay for Life has already been mentioned, that important event is at the Wilmington High School on June 17th at the Alumni Stadium. The opening ceremonies are at 5:30 p.m., and the Survivor Lap is at 6:00 p.m. The Luminaria Ceremony is at 8:45 p.m., all on Friday evening, and then there is the 7:00 Fight Back Ceremony on Saturday morning. Residents are certainly invited to participate. Also, the Board next meets on June 27th, and just a preview, the Fourth of July festivities begin on June 29th, the Wednesday after the Board's next meeting. Fun on the Fourth will go through July 4th, when it will conclude with a breakfast on that date. On July 2nd is Family Day, and the Family Day fireworks at the Town Common, and on July 3rd is the spectacular fireworks, obviously, at the Common. If folks have, need any information, they're encouraged to get it in one of two places, either by calling 978-657-8081, or by going to the website, funonthefourth.com. Fourth is all, is spelled out, so funonthefourth.com. Now that concludes the regular business, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion with Joe?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Third.
Unanimous? Thank you.